Good afternoon, School Board, Dr. Hernandez and District Stat. The time is five P M on June fourth, twenty twenty four, and I call this workshop meeting of Edwood Independent School District, School Board's Order. We'll start with roll call. Dr. James Hernandez, I'm here. Mr. Joe Sofia.
Present.
Mr. Frank Espinoza.
Present.
Mr. Luis Gomez.
Present.
Mr. Michael Valdez.
Present.
Mr. Richard Sandoyo.
Here.
And Martha Castilla, she will not be joining us tonight. Let the record show that a form of the Edwood Independent School District School Board is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Department of Education. Can everyone please join, join me for the U.S. pledge of allegiance and the Texas pledge of honor of homicide. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state under God, one free and individual. Thank you. Okay, before we call up any speakers, there are some procedural items to be announced. Board policy, B E D local limits public comments to specific agenda items. Any speaker that deviates from speaking on agenda item will be ruled out of order, and they will forfeit the rest of their time. The speaker will be informed when he or she has one, uh, one minute remaining. Speakers who engage in personal attacks or use insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language during any board meeting must be ruled out of order by their guiding officer and may be escorted from the board meeting, uh, meeting room by district peace officers. Any concerns or complaints regarding employees, public officials, students, or parents should be resolved via the appropriate complaint process as stated in B E D local. Pursuant to five five one point zero four two of the Texas government code, no board member or administrator may respond to a member of the public unless such response is the recitation of district policy or a statement of specific factual information. Please be advised that citizens and especially board members shall refrain from speaking over one another during the meeting out of respect for the speaker that has the board. Please be advised that citizens and especially board members. That was repeated, okay. Uh, next, we'll have... Is Miss Melody Herrera?
Present.
Uh, you have, uh, three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Today, I am here to express my concern regarding the item four X, discussion of the renewal of the district legal council contract with Jay Cruz and Associates L.L.C. for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. The amount of legal expenses this district has paid to this law firm is concerning. Doing research and comparing a district three times the size of Edwood I S D, the district has spent more on legal fees than they have. The district should be looking for a new law firm that is looking out for the best interest, the district's best interest. Over the years, I have not seen this, and almost all that is being done is continually changing board policies and procedures that silence the community and benefits the board or superintendent and not the residents or students, which have drastically affected student outcomes. Doing further research, which has already been submitted to the board president a few months ago last year, we have seen reports from the Laredo Morning News, West C I S D reaches settlement with an attorney over double dipping allegations, and other civil lawsuits that are pending against Juan Jay Cruz. Please do your research and do diligence, and hire a law firm that is reputable and that will be efficient in representing the district's best interests that will benefit student outcomes for the best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now can I have Ms. Agavita Harameo?
Good afternoon, uh, board committees, board, board members, uh, superintendent, leadership team, and community. On October twenty fifth, I sent an email with concerns regarding our attorney. Up to date, I have not received a response. Now I see that item four X is a discussion for review of renewal for contract services with our district attorney. While I know that legal representation is a requirement, I also feel that we seem to go over budgeted when it comes to legal fees, which is a big red flag, since we're already in the red, and we are a small district with a moment of approximately eighty-one hundred. Yes, we are in the process of closing schools. We have eighteen two partnerships that require contract review and employee terminations. But are some of these fees allocated for the purposes of grievances, investigations, complaints, and abuse? And so why is this happening in our district? If we would be transparent and accountable and listen to our concerns and not just rely on legal representation, we most likely would not spend four hundred and ninety-one thousand and eight, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars on legal representation this year. Do we ever use task via the resource or concerns, or consider opening the doors to resolve issues? We doubled our legal fees from last year, which was approximately two hundred and fifteen thousand last year. Please be more conscientious when reviewing these type of contracts. Our priority should be our students, and as our board president stated in one of our meetings, this would, this would be about four teachers we couldn't hire, hire. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry, sir, I forgot to ask you for a couple of comments. Okay. Um, Dr. Hernandez, you have your form?
Thank you, sir. And I'll make the line. Uh, first of all, I want to thank everybody that came in today for, uh, tonight's board workshop. Um, couple reminders, and then we're gonna go ahead and move into our presentation. I want to first start by thanking, uh, thanking Mr. McElven, uh, for visiting with every one of the trustees on our upcoming graduation ceremonies the next two nights. I know there was a concern brought up by one of our trustees regarding, uh, preparation for graduation ceremonies. We've already explained that to the trustees, and of course, we've also pushed back, uh, the start of, uh, the graduation ceremony at eight thirty, much like other years. So again, I want to thank you for doing that. Second of all, I also want to highlight, to do this at every, uh, workshop, we do have one birthday this month, and I know she just looked at me. So, um, Ms. Mina's birthday is this month, uh, it's on the eleventh, so I think that's next week, so we can give her a round of applause. It's on the month of this month, that's why I understand, yes. And so please, guys, pick up a cupcake on the way out, uh, we did give those to the women. And then, uh, in terms of presentations, you're gonna hear two presentations tonight. You're gonna hear one from, uh, Mr. Chavez's side of the house. Uh, there are, it's an update for L S G, as well as the items that are going up for consideration, board members, for you. Uh, remember, our board meeting is next Thursday, the thirteenth. Between now and the thirteenth, we also have an opportunity for you to come back, uh, to the board performance planning meeting on Tuesday, uh, where we'll go a little deeper into any conversation we have here regarding, uh, the leadership and instructional side of the items that are going up. But also, because this is our budget adoption month, we'll go a little more deeper on the budget development process, which, to be transparent, we've now been having that conversation since January, so it's not something that we, uh, just started having the conversation about. We do that every year around January, we start meetings. And so, uh, you'll hear from Mr. Chavez, after Mr. Chavez and Ms. Maripides will come up. Most of her presentation is regarding the preparation of this year's budget adoption, which again will come to you on the thirteenth. That will, um, that will be what we will follow for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So I want to remind you of that. And then there are a few items she also has that are going up for your consideration. Most of the items are recurring, um, these are items that come out of H R, like auxiliary, professional reports, uh, professional report in general. Yeah, most of these are recurring items, financial statements, these come every month. Right, there are a few things, R F Bs and donations that will be, uh, due. So at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Chavez, and he can give us a moment for this. Sir?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board, colleagues, community members. Uh, today, we're gonna go ahead and do the leadership presentation, which is going to include, uh, of course, our mission and our vision that we always follow and adhere to in all of our practices. Uh, also, we are gonna have these individuals, myself, Dr. Robert Ross Lucas, the superintendent of the district, Dr. Kimberly Madden, this is the superintendent of the division, and Mr. Travis Madden, the chief of school, speak to you today regarding, uh, our, uh, board agenda items. Uh, and of course, we have our, our board, uh, district strategic plan goals. We've got six of those, and of course, accompanying those, uh, those are the old priorities that we have from one through five. As we go forward, we're gonna look at our Low Star Governance Monthly Report for June. If you all recall, in May, unfortunately, we did not have the reading score data at that time of the last board meeting. We now have the reading score data, along with the math data, which is for this month. And so our end of learning outcomes for this particular piece is going to be Low Star Governance, uh, goal progress measures for reading, uh, one point one, one point two, one point three, for K one, two. And consequently, we'll look at the mathematics, uh, goal progress measures for grades K one and two. As we go forward, uh, I wanted to kind of reiterate that for our board meetings in May, we were gonna cover K one, two reading. Did have the data. So for this workshop, we have to cover K one, two math, and we're covering them both together. So let's start off with this. For G P M one point one, which is the kindergarten reading, as you can see, uh, in our beginning baseline, starting from the left to the right, in twenty-two, in the year, we had, we were at thirty-six percent. And this is reading at grade level, okay? Reading at that respective grade of kindergarten. In twenty-three, in the course, I'm sorry, in the year, we had, we jumped up to fifty-two percent. The goal for that year of twenty twenty-three was thirty-nine percent. Uh, this year, for twenty-four, we had a beginning, middle, and end of year assessments. Uh, we went from forty-three to forty, fifty-two, and ended up at sixty-five percent. Our goal for twenty twenty-four was at forty-two percent. To be clear, the data source that we use for this data is N class amplify reading diagnostic data for end of year for twenty twenty-four. As we go forward, as we've gone over this piece, we'll kind of see and use that same case. However, before we go forward, I want to look at the subpopulation data. What you have, you... Is you have the emergent bilingual data, which is sitting at eighty-two point seven percent for at benchmark and above benchmark. The at benchmark and above benchmark equates to meets in the STAR standard. So we utilize a combination of both of those, which for our kindergarten emergent bilingual is eighty-two. Now, remember, all students were at sixty-five. That's a, that's a good score for our emerging bilinguals. If you look below, we have our economically disadvantaged. Now, economically disadvantaged, very similar to all the students that we have, the large swap. Hence, the sixty-four percent is close to the sixty-five percent that we have across the board. Our special ed population is sitting at thirty-two point six percent, and we have to break down there by the number of students, which is total of forty-three students in kindergarten across the district. As we go to the next section, which is one point two, we're looking at first graders, right? First grade recent. We note in the baseline, in twenty-two, we're at thirty-five percent. At the end of the year, twenty-three, we're sitting at forty-four percent. Uh, past the twenty-three mark by four percentage points. This year, for twenty, oh, sorry, that's twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, these are our beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year scores. As you can see, uh, we have a little up to fifty-three percent, and the mark for this year, twenty twenty-four, was sitting at forty-five percent. So let's look at how the data breaks down. I want you to keep in mind that number fifty-three, because that's for all students. We go ahead and we look at our, uh, our, uh, emergent bilingual, they're sitting at sixty-three percent. Kudos to those students, they, they pass it by a full ten points, right? Ten percentage points across the board. And you have the breakdown there also. There's about a hundred and twenty-sevens, no, there are a hundred and twenty-seven students that make up this particular percentage. As we, uh, go down to the economically disadvantaged, four hundred and eighty-seven, they're sitting at fifty-two point eight. Yes, fifty-two point eight, and of course, fifty-three was total for everyone. As we go down to the special education component, we're sitting at twenty-nine point one percent. And this includes fifty-five percent of our special education students. As we go down to the next indicator, one point three, this is for students in grade two on our reading assessment. Again, still, our data source is N class amplify reading diagnostic data. And we started the year in twenty, we begin the year in twenty-two at twenty-nine percent. At the end of the year, twenty-three, we went up to forty-three percent. The mark for that year for twenty-three was thirty-four percent. And our beginning of the year for this year was thirty-five percent, went up to forty-two percent, and ended at fifty percent, our mark being at thirty-nine percent. Remember that fifty percent for that all students. As we go down and look at the N class reading for grade two, we can see they're sitting at sixty-five for emergent bilingual. Again, fifty percent, this is fully fifteen point four percentage points above all students. Great job. And again, of course, our economically disadvantaged, that represents most of the district. We've got five hundred and one students, forty-eight point three percent. They're sitting at fifty percent at all. And as we go to the special education component, we see for eighty-five students, they're sitting at eighteen point eight percent. Now, as we look at what the superintendent, I did, we're monitoring, because I want to state this, you know what the goal is? The goal is third grade reading, reading at grade level. That's why we use these goal progress measures to measure how are they viewed in kindergarten, first grade, and secondary. We will not have the final third grade STAR scores, uh, until the middle of July. Uh, that's when we talked about with our P A representatives, along with our region twenty representatives. So back in July is when we're gonna be coming to you for these particular pieces. So these are the reinforcements. In other words, these are the things that we're doing, that we're gonna continue to do, because they provide outcomes. The things that we're gonna do for refinements is looking at supporting novice teachers with intentional two-week coaching cycles for the beginning of the year, model and support, right? With less internalization for specifically foundational skills lessons. We're gonna also monitor the use of the critical readers within the structured literacy block, that structured block that's dedicated to literacy, every day at home campus, at the elementaries. Monitor, uh, I'm sorry, monitor views of identified resources for small group instruction and play data from N class. As you go, the board, you all approved, uh, some of the supplemental tier-two, tier-three introductory pieces, high quality resources that the academics department gave. Uh, they'll be utilizing these sources, these resources to utilize in small group instruction from the data from N class. And coach teachers around the implementation of reading academy content. We have, uh, our, our reading, uh, our reading coordinator. Uh, at for elementary, Ms. Marissa Vez is the person who's been trained, and she's training our own, ours, teachers. Before, we utilized P K for essay, with an option to use region twenty. But, uh, Ms. uh, Vez is, has her master's in reading, and she's been training us and does a very good job of that. So we're gonna now, now that they can train, we're gonna coach how they implement their training into the N A classroom. Okay, so we're gonna move on down to mathematics. Mathematics, again, the same structure. Uh, in this case, ladies and gentlemen, it's very bottom. Our data source is a different data source, it's not, it's not N class. It is N W B A math mathematics diagnostic data. Now, and it started off the end of the year in twenty twenty-two at twenty-five percent. At the end of twenty twenty-three, they are at thirty-six percent. Our goal for that year was thirty-one percent. This year, for twenty twenty-four, they started off at the beginning of the year at twenty-six percent, uh, went up to the middle of the year at thirty-two percent, and ended the year at thirty-seven percent, which is the target that was set back to twenty twenty-two for twenty twenty-four for kindergarten. As we look at, at this application again, remember, we're at thirty-seven percent, right, for all. Here, we have the kindergarten, it's where our emergent bilingual is sitting at fifty-seven point nine percent. Again, that's the higher than high for our, [coughs] for our economically disadvantaged, sitting at thirty-six point seven, which is reflected to the thirty-seven percent that we have, right? That's four hundred and sixty-six students. And for special education, for forty-three students in kindergarten, they're sitting at eighteen point six percent on the math, N W B A math assessment. As we go to our grade one, grade one, I want to point this out to you, but I'll point out to the... But remember, board members, this is where the academics team did a title of Eureka Math across the district. They did this starting in January, kind of implemented some things in training in December, but started implementing in the classroom in January. So baseline for twenty twenty-two, end of year, was at thirteen percent. Last year, twenty twenty-three, end of year, we're sitting at twenty-one percent. One percentage shy of the goal for twenty-three, which is twenty-two percent. This year, we started off seventeen percent and went up to eighteen percent. Remember, when I presented this to you at the end of the year, we saw a pretty flat line. But I want you to look at the end of the year, twenty-eight percent, fully eleven percent gain from the beginning of the year to now the end of the year, which was in May. And, uh, the one difference was that they were utilizing the Eureka Math. So this is a very good indicator of that success. It made great, though, for thirty-one percent. Our twenty twenty-four mark was at thirty-one percent, but fell short by three percentage points. If we look at that, remember, that was at twenty-eight percent. Our by emergent bilingual, we're sitting at thirty-one point five percent. That's for a hundred and twenty-seven of our students in, uh, first grade. And economically disadvantaged, sitting at twenty-seven point four, which again, we're sitting at twenty-eight percent, right? And that's for four hundred and eighty-five students in first grade. Our special education population is sitting at sixteen point one percent. Uh, and that's for fifty-six of our students in special education, grade one, for our mathematics. Next grade levels, grace, grade two. Uh, now, this is the one, if you all recall, was, was, was the baseline. And we talked about, this is one of the things that prompted us to look at utilizing a, uh, a treatment such as Eureka Math. The math college was in grade one. Here, we didn't do the math, but we're rolling out K one and two this spring and summer and next year for implementation. And we can see that even the year for twenty-two, they were sitting at nine percent. Into the year of, uh, twenty-three, at seventeen percent, meaning the mark in twenty-three. But when they came back to the school, the beginning of the year, they were sitting at sixteen. But the increase was flatline. Went to seventeen percent, and at the end of the year stayed at seventeen percent. With that mark, they are fully nine percentage points below. Given the fact that we're looking at an eleven-point increase in, uh, first grade, we hope to replicate that and bring them up to par for this, remember, seventeen percent. Our bilingual, emergent bilingual is sitting at nineteen point five percent still, two percentage, two and a half percentage points above the, the group. Economically disadvantaged, of course, four hundred and ninety-five of those students, sixteen point four. Remember, we're looking at seventeen percent, pretty close. And here, for our special education, they dropped as low as four point seven percent. As we go on and look at reinforcements, these are the reinforcements that we're going to practice. These are things that we've done, and these are effective practices developing numbers in the math literacy amongst our students. Monitoring implementation of software study, using bed, high-quality supplemental resources. These are the same resources for which you all approved in April and May. Building a teacher efficacy through less internalization during professional learning. Supporting teachers in implementation of high-quality instructional materials, H Q I M. Heard of that before? Tier one resources and effective teaching practices. Refinements, anything that we need to improve on. One of those refinements is implementing Eureka Math in grades A to second to strategically support teachers with math research-based instructional strategy, otherwise known as R B, R B I S, and less internalization consecutively, to strengthen instructional coach capacity by engaging in Texas lesson study through the Education Service Center twenty to effectively lead professional learning committee and implementation of high-quality instructional material. That is the end of the L S P presentation. Any questions?
My question is, um, sounds like, uh, grade five, I'm in grade two point three, grade two mathematics. So whenever working here for a few years, is it comparing, like, following the student?
Yeah.
Or it's like, just grade two, or what grade two did for next year?
Quick question. So what we call that is cohorts. For example, following the students in K, how do they do the next year in first and all year in K? But these are, these are students that are enrolled at that time. So next year, so basically, the baseline for twenty-two in the year, that's a whole different group of students. That's students that were in kindergarten, in first, in, in twenty twenty-two. Students in twenty twenty-three are different group students, as well as students in twenty-four, D O Y. What we look at, if you look at the application of the curriculum for those students, and, uh, so I, then what would that answer?
I don't know about the reach their targets, like, they went over the targets. So what is for like, um, how is the, how do you look at it for like following years? Like, are we still gonna keep it at like forty-five percent for the next year or are we gonna increase?
That, that is totally up to the board. This, these are L S G goals that are set by the board. And you can see that we have a hit date of twenty twenty-seven. So we want to make sure to keep that going up. Right. And make sure that that keeps going up in terms of our, our results. Uh, again, that's, that's a question that, that, well, you all said this, so it's very possible that we change some of those, uh, in the future.
So what would the next year, like, the one that was fifth, the one that's nine, cool? So it's just gonna stay like, uh, fifty to percent until we change it, like, how this moves?
Yes, sir. Again, these, uh, these L S G goals are broken down by grade level, by time, uh, in terms of having a five-year goal. Those five-year goals are also really always together in that. If we, we dare change those, uh, then you have to go and just look at those numbers again. And it may be a good thing to look at that. But, uh, as you can see here, in reading, we have a pretty high number. Uh, if we look at mathematics, it's a little bit lower than that, right? Uh, the other thing is, we also want to look through July, when we get the actual STAR scores. And that'll kind of give us an indication of these particular districts that are used. Thank you, any other questions? Pretty good. At this time, I'd like to bring up me. Serious and to tell you, this is a recurring agenda item. This is for pre-k. This is for pre-k for S A program for twenty-four, twenty-five. This is not the bill, this is San Antonio, pre-k for S A program. And again, we've been doing this for anywhere from a year.
This is the idea that, uh, citizens of the city.
Correct. Yes, sir. Correct. Yes, sir. No? Yes, sir. All right. At this time, I'd like to talk about some of the other pieces. Yes, good afternoon. Hernandez, S T board members, S L T members. So there's a couple of items for your consideration. The first item here is four B, and this is the S A T student assessments. We call it four. We do this every year. This is where we have to offer advanced placement, T S I prep. But more importantly, you see at the very bottom of the bullets, we offer the S A T, P S A T, uh, and the P S A T, eight, nine, ten, eleven. So that's all we offer those assessments every year, because we all have kids here in this district. Next item is communities and schools. And this item will be surveyed by March. Kennedy High School is the moral high school from Brentwood Middle School. As you know, communities and schools have worked on this for many years, it's a recurring item. Provide services, our parent engagement, after-school products, and things of that nature through C I S, San Antonio. Next item is speech specialists. You're gonna see this item twice. First item, the reason why you see this is they should cover scope of work done for this school year, just pulled up here. So this is an increase. As you know, L S S Ps, which is language, school, speech pathologists, are in a high need here in the state of Texas. Uh, currently, we only have one or two in the district. And so a lot of the work was to lift that because we are short. So they provided us with the L S S P work to cover that scope of work. So our language speech pathologists, as a reminder, early individuals, they're under assess the kids. Special education must be preferred, they do have to pay for work, and then they have to be present at the, they have to be present at the, uh, Rs. And so we're shorthanded, so we contract them out to fill this need. Next is the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute. We do this every year as a renewal. This is where they offer the San Antonio Mobile Mental Wellness Collaborative, where they go around and provide these services to our community and our students at a low cost. It's affordable mental health, wellness, and youth leadership opportunities through the Meadows Health Institute. And four F is not the answer. This is a recurring item, which is running in last year. And what it does is, uh, it's powered through Power School. And it's a platform, online platform. And it's for college career and life readiness, where our, beginning with our middle schoolers, the sixth grade, they start putting in their, their, uh, individual plans in there. And so that's where they start doing the course selection and careers. So it kind of guides them through their high school path to see where they wanna go. And then eventually, when they graduate, as far as where they wanna be beyond high school. It also helps with the F A S P A college and career exploration process. NearPod is an online platform that we're offering, is very popular amongst our teachers. And I heard you lot in here, board, to say, make sure that they have the resources that they need. And this is one of those resources that we're being very critical of, wanting to make sure that high usage rates were being done and being effectively implemented in the schools. And so this is something that was high usage. And so it's an online platform and provides interactive videos, assessments, and activities. Now, to note, this is a two-year purchase through E S R. That's why you see that high numbers, because it covers two years via the last remaining dollars through E S R. Okay? And last but not least, this is also Seesaw, which is the other, uh, educational platform. And this one is a little different in the sense that it serves as a digital portfolio for students. So that's why they can go in there, create their portfolios, drop in their work, things of that nature. It also has a parent communication tool. Students can go in there, they have their own, um, sign in, and they can create videos, draw pictures, things of that. And then, uh, this also is a two-year purchase using E S R. That's why you have that high number. It's to cover some two years for expiring E S R funds. And again, here is speech specialist once again. Now, this one is the new contract for next year, okay? And so what this does is the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the one I brought you earlier, is to close us out. We had an increase because there is a shortage, shortage on pathologists. And so this is for next year. It includes speech therapy for both mono-linguine bilingual, speech and language pathologists, and our licensed school psychologists. And so that's just to give us an extra resource in case, in the event that we're not able to fill all our vacancies under L S S Ps, we then can refer to speech specialists for those services. Any questions? Um, the speech specialists, are, are those, are those supporting, like, special ed or? Okay. Yes, sir. Special, special education, okay. Please, yes, it's a good special. Thank you for that.
Going back to four B, I think it is? Going back to four B, I think it is? Yes. S A T and all that. Uh, I know I talked about this last year, but the S A T, you know, all these things were starting to become passagable colleges, they're not utilizing it as much as anymore. Is that still the thing, or are they still, uh, still utilized? The S A Ts and all the scores?
The question is, does the S A T have any, any substance when you go to college? And the answer is still yes. And they may use other ways, but it's still the standard of S A T. And that's something different that we've heard, but it is still being used. Remember, the P S A T gives the children the opportunity, when they take it in tenth grade, to have a possibility to be a National Merit Scholar. And so that has not gone away. So they take it in eighth grade, they're gonna take it again in tenth grade, however they do, and then possibly qualify when they get into Denver. And so it's still those well-accepted, uh, honors that they have. Yes, sir.
My first question is regarding four B. Are we able to see, like, at the end of the school year, or like after the tests are completed, like, how the students are doing? Because I know these tests differ than our, like, um, star test. And also, like, T S I Institute, um, how does that do the college board? Because I know, like, that's like a different test, like, that the schools also use. So you don't have to be put in remedial classes, college.
So the first question is, do we have these results? And yes, they will be compiled at the end of the year. Remember that these results also help for C C M R overall. So yes, we'll have those, uh, those results available to you. It sounds like in July is when the results will be coming in. Uh, we can definitely make that available to you. And then the next question is, the Texas Accessive Initiative, T S I there? It's not the assessment, Mr. Rodriguez, it's the actual test prep. So it has a feature that we could offer for test prep. And you're right, the T S I testing itself, correct, Mr. Rodriguez, is through a different platform, correct? Okay. So it just offers test prep, not necessarily the assessment itself, but you are correct. And, uh, the T S I, this is a reminder, that's the assessment that kids that want to take college credit in high school have to take and pass so that they can go ahead and enroll in college courses while they're in high school. That's correct, Mr. Rodriguez.
My next question is for C. I understand we don't have Gus Garcia on there at middle school?
That is correct. We do not have Gus Garcia. And I believe they offer other programs at Gus Garcia, they're not considered to be C I S. So they offer other programs. I cannot name it off the top of my head. Do you know, Mr. Garcia, would they offer Gus Garcia?
Regarding the Meadow, how they need more? It has more to do with the enrollment numbers, and Gus Garcia would need more on the Meadows Collaborative for referrals. And then, um, for communities and schools this year, what we did was, based on the assessment of needs at Brentwood, uh, we added them as the middle school that would, uh, where they facilitated help there with C I S.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Chavez, that's back to you, sir.
Good evening, board trustees, Dr. Hernandez. Of the office of school leadership has three items that we want to seek approval for this evening. The first item is an annual item, um, that relates to the T-test appraisal calendar, which is the teacher appraisal calendar. This is a comprehensive calendar that guides principals as they prepare to evaluate their teachers. We'll also seek an approval of, uh, partnership with Big Rock Educational Services. Henry V. Gonzalez has been awarded an Effective Schools Framework grant. Um, and guidelines to that grant include partnering with a vetted, uh, improvement partner from the Texas Education Agency. And so we continue to use Big Rocks, um, with several of our schools as a V I P. And we wanna continue this partnership with H B G for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
And the last thing from the office of school leadership is we're bringing to the board a request for approval for our Van Porham Memorial High School to take students, um, to a Florida trip next, uh, spring break from March the seventh through March the tenth. So coming to you, uh, this early so that we can begin preparations, should you approve for this out-of-state travel. Uh, and the kiddos and the, uh, the Van Boosters will begin fundraising, uh, obviously, once approval is gained. Yes, sir.
Uh, I know Memorial's never, more, had no problems with getting, with the fundraising, getting things done properly.
Uh, Memorial fans in general, and their boosters, um, actually do a really good job fundraising. Uh, they do a lot of different types of events, uh, lots of, uh, canvassing. Um, there, there's a high level of confidence that they'll be able to fund the, uh, just through fundraising alone. They're not asking for any district, uh, out of local funds at all. It will all be through fundraising.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much. That concludes the, uh, leadership portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I wanted to comment, did you pause and ask you to say that again, please? Thank you, sir. Can anybody hear me by means of mic? Thank you. Is that okay? So tonight, we're gonna concentrate on the budget adoption. We have a really, it looks like a really lengthy agenda. A lot of the items you're gonna see repeated, um, and I'm not gonna read all of them, I promise you. But you're gonna find that the budget is still limited, and we know this on compensation plan, the work that we've already done. Everything that we started back in January hopefully comes together tonight. So as we go through, uh, what we wanna start with again is the budget adoption. And I will point out, or you will see on the slide, that there are agenda items attached pretty much to every slide. They will be out of order, but we will cover everything before the presentation is over. If I miss something, let me know and we'll make sure to address it. So to start off with, I just wanna remind you, um, or to remind everyone, what part of board responsibility is, and that's part of what we're doing tonight. The board approves the budget. By law, the board approves the budget from the general fund, child nutrition, and debt service. And we approve that at the function level. The board also sets the tax rate. And there are some timing issues that we'll go over there in a moment, because you're gonna see a tax rate tonight, back to proposed rate. We will adopt proposed rate and the, the budget in June. But we will come back to the board again in August, and also in a little bit as we book the presentation. The board also works with the superintendent to set policy and strategies to help academically, our general students academically enter my dish. So those at a high level, that is the function of the board. As we do the work and we prepare for tonight's budget, we do this with the same practical purposes in mind, to make sure that we're addressing the goals and priorities that the board and the superintendent hold high and what we do around the, the school district. The presentation you heard earlier about, um, L S G, that's part of the anchor, what, how are students doing? So you will see a lot of those elements were incorporated into the budget and the numbers that you see tonight. This current budget that we're living under, twenty-three, twenty-four, started off as a ninety-five million dollar budget, with eleven point three million dollars supplemented from after distant positions, thirteen million dollars in total. Um, keep those breakdowns in mind, but this is the budget that we've not even finished this year. We're still working under thi- this current budget, but we have to make sure, as part of the work, to ensure that we have those eleven point three million dollars, plus the three hundred thousand dollars that we have in T-class. We needed to find a home for either the priorities or the people that are funded through those dollars. Right? Those were a lot of the conversations we've had, and what units did we have in there? Instructional coaches, we had teachers, we have work, like the teacher pipelines, and professional development for aspiring leaders. So a lot of that work was coming from, or is currently coming from E S R, and T-class money that we know is gonna go away in September. So over the last few months, the task has been to figure out how we're gonna continue those programs and make decisions about what priorities to put in the budget for next year. Okay? So I'm gonna start with the exciting stuff, the tax rate. You're gonna see several slides, but we have to go through a process for public notice. So the meeting was posted, or it, it was posted for our, to be tired, for our board adoption on the thirteenth. We have a public hearing on four o'clock. And we invite the public to come visit with us, or to hear the presentation, so that they'll hear some of the information that you all are hearing tonight. So as I mentioned earlier, we adopt the budget with a proposed tax rate. Why is that important? We received notification from the city of San Antonio, the tax office, the appraisal district, and we get an estimate of what they think our taxes are gonna look like. There's still a lot of work left through July and August, because we get the appraisals in July, and then in August, we have to come back to the board. So we are also gonna review the appraisal value, the comparisons twenty-three, uh, twenty-four with the rates and levies, the average residence value, and what effect it ultimately has in projected revenues. So this year, we are proposing a one point zero to a dollar two tax. And you remember some time back, we were, and Mr. Senghor, thank you for asking the question earlier. We reduce the tax rate based on what the state costs compression. What does that mean? The state does not like, and I'm gonna get that slide, it's right here, actually. The state, what they've attempted to do over the last few years is say, hey, we're gonna ask you to reduce your rate, because property taxes are rising. We're gonna ask you to reduce your rate, so you can collect about the same money you collect from the prior year. We'll make up the difference, because what we don't want is for that maximum compressed rate. It's a T, a calculated value, and what it's intended to do is maintain the tax rate equity, so that no district has a rate that is ninety percent difference. It's a ten percent variation, so that everyone's like within a ninety percentile of each other. So that my neighbor can't adopt a dollar fifty tax rate while we can only adopt a dollar rate. So that's the intent behind the compression. So what that'll look like is we have an adopted tax rate that's based off of estimates now. If there are any changes in our tax rule, whether it be through, um, um, disputes and/or the state coming back and saying our, our, the, the county rates aren't valid, they will come back to the board in August to either finalize the rate or amend it as appropriate to meet the, the budget. And you'll notice that we have the same rate this year as the prior year. And in the rate for the maintenance operations, which is what we do for our general, what we use for our general operating fund, has significantly decreased over the last few years. But that is a result of that M C R that the state imposes on every district. So what does it look like? Our appraisal value has gone up by about three hundred million dollars. We have about two million dollars in new properties. Our actual taxable value, though, is only about two million dollars more. And that significantly, we've talked about that in prior meetings. Um, and we'll, we'll go over this at the board performance meeting with more depth. But basically, what, what happens is that as community ages and we have those frozen values, regardless of what happens with the property values and increases in the taxes, I'm sorry, in the, the value of the home, those taxes, taxes get frozen. So we have, even though the numbers say that they should be increasing, what we actually plan. So we have, even though the numbers say that they should be increasing, what we actually collect is staying fairly stagnant for two reasons, compression and also the frozen tax values. So this is just a comparison. Last year, this year, we already mentioned that the rate, we're going to propose the same rate until we get better information from the state in the next two months. For minority, we're going to end up with the same tax rate. And at the board performance planning meeting, we'll also talk about why this is significant for our debt, what this is doing on the debt side to our district as well. So we'll get into a lot of deeper information, just as a learning, by this week on Tuesday. Now, again, the value of the residence, the market is stabilizing, so the property values, the houses, the market was going up. In our neighborhoods, the houses last year, the average sale was going at $153,000. This year, it's stabilizing, it's dropped to $148,000. Notice the average taxable value of residents, though. So that's one thing that I'm looking for from the state, like why is that happening? It's all about double, then I'm not collecting any more taxes. So since things are maybe going through on Tuesday, why is that happening and why isn't that making it to our coffers? Right? And even though suddenly, I want you to notice in our district, what that means in dollars, though. You think something is doubling, but that means a dollar for every home sale is about $116. And in a small community, it's modest and maybe get enough impact to drive the amount of money that we collect in the year. So I'm going to stop right there. That's a lot about taxes. The bottom line is, we are the $1.02, we're proposing a $1.02. We're going to wait for final values in July and wait for the state to tell us what our max compressed rate can be and bring that back to the board in August. Are there any questions about that? Yes, sir.
So these numbers, we're already coming for 75% collection rate. All the taxes are on the property lines. These numbers work, they're saying strictly calculated.
So we're going to see that, the effect on the debt service, on the taxes, on the MNO and the debt service. So that's a good question. So here, sir, these are just, this is what the state is telling us. How it makes it onto our revenue, that's where we, that's where we implement the collection rates that you're talking about, whether it's current year or prior year, and I'll show you what those look like on numbers. Now, let's talk about the challenges that we have throughout, in all the work that's happened in the last few months. We have a lot of assumptions that we have to make, and we've made a lot of recommendations through the board, through different works and different committees. So we have, we think redesign, there was a lot of work there, and we'll show you what those numbers look like. Staffing committees have been a full force over the last few months, and they're going to continue into next year. And then SFT going back to their groups and making some really hard decisions and questions about what priorities we have and how we're going to land in this coming year's budget. It is the final year for Esther three. That was the emphasis for all the work, all this past year. And I want to remind everybody again that we have really critical positions that we're funding from those grants, such as academic coaches and some of our teachers. Now, the funds go away, the needs do not. Again, we have things like HBC 4545 tutorials that we were putting out of this. Dr. Basuto, I just might connect some of those things. We're paying for licenses two years ahead, so that we know that we can support some of the initiatives that we have and not worry about how the funding is going to come over the next couple of years. So all those decisions have to land somewhere on the scales of numbers to make sure that at the end of the day, we have the supports in place for our students. So it is also the final year of T class, and I already mentioned that, that that has things like our pipelines, our professional development, those have been really, really critical in preparing new teachers. Plain old inflation. Right? There's things we can't have, I can't call the electrical company and tell them that I want a 10% cut on my bill. That's not the way they work. Fuel, all those things that you see at home, impact the district in the same manner. Only I can mention you, because we're a bigger entity, right? So all those things have to make it in here. We did work on making 10% reduction for nonbehavioral budgets, that we'll talk about. Campuses, I want, I can't stress enough that we make sure that the campuses at least work with their operating budget from this year and a very similar, if not complete, budget moving into next year. And then the revenue and expense projections, the challenges really that we have with student enrollment declines, attendance, and how those impact our state funding. We also got hit this year with federal funding reductions. Shards from one month to another, we learned we were not going to get $1.2 million in reimbursements for services we had already provided to our students. And then we have, of course, with Esther going away, that powder in the red costs, that 10%, 12% got me far above that. So if you think about $13 million, that was about another $1.2 million that we will get next year. And then as part of the salary increases, what we do have as part of the budget is on the teacher's step rate. So part of the skills required that we, or that we've adopted, and the board has adopted, is that a teacher every year gets at least their step increase, and that's included as part of the budget process. Okay, we talked about this at the board performance planning meeting. Through the different committee work, rethink redesign, the return on investment, we have found about $8.2 million in savings out of various sources. I can tell you that about 6.1 of those impact the general fund directly. So the others were soft monies, but that's, that's okay, because those are grants that are going to go away. So from the general fund, we found about $6.1 million in savings, and you can read and we talked about where all those come from. Now, one of the critical areas that's included in that $8.2 million was through the rethink redesign work. We were able to place 37 teachers into true vacancies, two principals, two assistant principals, counselors, nurses, custodians, child nutrition workers, a lot of front office staff and instructional support staff, all in vacancies that man otherwise would not have been filled. And that's also critical to the work. It's not just about that $3.76 million. It's about getting people in the right seats, where otherwise we would have vacancies to start the school. So that's significant work that the rethink redesign did. Now, challenges for enrollment, attendance, and funding, right? We worked a lot on the expenses. We worked a lot, all year on the expenses. Let's talk a little bit about what our calculations look like for revenue. And I wish the color were better. If you can concentrate, because this screen, the colors do matter, but if you can look at this screen, they're actually have some color. I want to take you back to 2223, and then where we think we're going to land in 2324 and 2425. At the very top, it says enrollment at snapshot. That was our enrollment October 31st of those years. We talk a lot about how the state gives us money. The state does not give us money for every student that is enrolled on AP. The state gives us money based on the students that show up or don't show up every day at school. So if, follow me on 23, please, for 81, 8,177 students. In 2223, anyone who pulled up our summary of finance, and they can see that the state actually paid us on regular program ADA of 5,957, well, 58 kids. That is a difference, if you go down where it says funding loss. That is a difference of 2,219 students on AP that we didn't get funding for. But we hired every teacher, hired all the support that we needed. And just at the very basic, just at the very basic, we're not going to talk about special education rates, bilingual rates, at the most basic student level, of $6,160 that the state provides for students, that is the amount of money that we do not get from the state to provide services to our kids. So not only do we not get that money, but it's extremely important that that 2,219 students, at some point or another, those students were not in a seat to get educated. So when you look at it from that lens and that perspective, that's when we talk about HBC 4545, providing tutorials, providing the ancillary services to catch up with students. Not only do we not get the money, now we need to figure out how we're going to provide those services so that they can make the time and make up the assignments, whether it be after school, et cetera. So those are some of the challenges that we're running into, and you can see the trends in 2324 are looking very similar, and we're projecting the same trend for 2425. So when we talk about scrubbing expenses and figuring out what we're going to do, we've done everything we have. We need to work with our community to get our students in the board. It's best for them, it's definitely going to help us. So moving into this year, you just saw the numbers we're projecting after the current year. We have, this is agenda item 4N, we have a budget amendment for the general fund that will not impact the fund balance. This is just moving from one function to the other. So there's no impact. What I think I'm pointing out on this slide, though, is that even though we had adopted with, with the mail-in, it's like a $9.2 million deficit, we can expect that we're going to hit the fund balance by about 3.7. So that's going to leave us about $54 million to carry over. Reminder to the board, we need about two and a half months of operating expenses, about $20.7 million. So that's about two years able to operate without getting into trouble, but we've got a lot of work left to do. Clearly on the revenue secondary, students to show up, and definitely on the expense side. So all of that and everything we've talked about lands here. Our revenues, I'm estimating we're going to land about 82.5. And so Mistress, you asked earlier, the local tax collections, are there on that local part, that 20.1? Of those, about 17.2 are tax collections based on this, on that 2425 project. 17.3 are tax collections. And our budget, absorbing the positions formerly funded by Esther, are in the state. The teachers get increased and the compensation plan adjustments are all included here. And we're going to go over those adjustments to compensation. Our expenses are still landing at about $99.9 million. So I want to point this out, that leaves us with a $17.4 million deficit left. Despite all the work, what we can't control are the revenues from the state. So despite all the work in reducing from 106 to 190, and absorbing positions from Esther and all the work that various committees have done, we still have that funding gap between the revenue and the expenses.
I want to connect a couple of things. You can go back to slide. So as you can tell, just a reminder, our requirements from the state is that we have to have at least 20, 20.7 million dollars. You may hear lawyers, it's already coming out in Facebook from other districts. You may hear that other districts are about to go into their dividends or fund balances to make the difference. Now, that's not something that we will bring as a recommendation to you, because once we go under that required amount, that will cause all kinds of issues for us. I will also tell you, when we haven't gotten to the recommendations that are going to bring for staff, we have to be really careful on how much we bring to staff in terms of compensation in mind. I've always been clear with you and upfront with you about, we want to compensate our staff. What we weren't getting with five years ago was this amount of inflation. We are literally just chasing inflation right now. That's all we're doing. And in some instances, you also have the insurance costs, which are eating on our staff as well. And so I will tell you, just from certain local examples, our biggest school district put out a 2% increase. That has caused issues among all of us, just because our debate district's sunk, and it's going to cause collapsing effects to the rest of us. And we're all in different, we're all in different budget years, we all have different revenues that are coming in, we all have different attendance rates too. Again, Miss Martín made it very clear, enrollment's one thing, but actual attendance is another. And I will tell you, that goes for all our programs. Some of you were at the learn for life maturation, same thing. They are, they are addressing the lack of students showing up, and they're being extremely flexible with kids. But we can't be flexible that we don't, that we bypass 90%, or vacancies 90%, things like that. And so this is what we're up against. We're not getting any funding. I don't, and I've said this to you guys before, I do not project we will get any funding for two more years, if not four. And so we've got to be really cautious. One, we're going to be really cautious about what we bring to you as a recommendation, because our needs is going there next. Because we've got to use our money as less as possible for the next four years. And keep in mind, I asked her specifically, I mentioned, the house bills, the senate bills, the additional requirements have not gone away. She hasn't even touched the safety and security requirements, the police officers. Remember, you guys, you allowed us to put in a exemption, I think it was a fair amount. Much like every other school district. So a lot of this is, yes, it is politics that are coming down from state. We're asked to do things that we're not giving any assistance for. And so I want to connect those things for you, because we're still going to have to bring, not beyond all the different programs we discussed. And Dr. Basuto and Dr. Martín, and those teams have done a really good job of cutting up the excess. But you can't go too deep without then start affecting just the service we provide for kids, because you also heard tonight about the speech philosophers and all those other folks. They come at a pretty premium, if we can find them, it's a whole other conversation. And so I'll leave that there, but I wanted to connect that for you guys. Do y'all have any questions? We've thrown a lot at you right now.
There's a question.
Looking at slide 18, the enrollment, attendance, and funding. Yes. So after hearing how much we're actually getting paid per student, and what our ADA is supposed to be, what can we as a school district do to like actually have the students in the classrooms? Because we can't just put the blame on the parents. We also have to like see like what's really going on in the child's educational journey that's not bringing them into the classroom.
So, and you're right. So you've heard about services that we've got mental health issues. You've heard about services tonight that we're talking about. We have students with a pandemic that have to work. There are real life challenges that opening the door is just a business. Right? We also provide transportation. So there's a lot of things that we're going to provide those ancillary services, background services, to make sure our kids are here. But we need to be met halfway too. So there's, what we only ask is that we get the kids in the classroom, whatever that means. Again, we provide the transportation services, we provide mental health awareness. What we can't provide is someone that needs a job. And we do, even that, we try to do through our ICT programs. We try to hire our students through some of our programs as well. But any suggestions and anything that the community can help us with, we need to be civilized.
I'd also, I'd also like to the conversation that most students come to school because when they have a high quality teacher and a high quality principal, they know in school. Not only does that attract the students to the school, but it also really should prepare. So I think we've spent a lot of money, time, and years investing in our bench. And by a bench, what I mean, what I mean is our principal bench, our assistant principals bench, and then also our teacher bench. Mr. Chappell, while he was presenting, talked a lot about how we have to continue to invest in the coaching cycle of the teachers. There's, we're trying to lift all this up at the same time, and I believe all those factors contribute. And it's not just the statistics, there's copious amounts of research. That those are the factors that bring students in. But I do agree with Miss Martín, we've got to be met in the middle also. Because our staff is doing everything they can possibly do for them. I know we've got principals that are doing attendance dances, and they're bringing the kids on Saturdays. We've got some, some of the high school principals are being extremely flexible with coming in late and then coming in on Saturdays. And this is not even discussing just the discipline issues we're having. We've got to make investments there to actively request the teachers. That has to come up all the way up to administration from teachers. We need support in the classroom, because all of that in the year is just getting the basic lessons across. And so I think that's the part that And so I think that's the part that we can do, and I agree with you, Mr. Brothers. I think there is, we don't need to look at this as a scarcity competition, it's how do we extend the pipe so that we can all support this work. At the end of the day, you know, I want our kids to get everything they possibly can. But I also can ask our teachers to keep pouring, pouring, pouring into something. And they're not getting back in the middle. And Board, you guys have done a good job of supporting that over the years. What we're talking about is just the reality of what we are.
So we should have a new cycle of options for students. Your neighborhood's immune, so the likelihood of one class to choose is a very operating issue. So there are a lot of different things and a lot of policies that you've done to help the situation to solve these problems.
Another question I was gonna ask, like later on, or at least before the school, the next school year, like are we gonna be provided like like the capacity in the actual school enrollment, how we were like providing the capacity like for the, when we're working, redesigning, that's another big cost, like the school, the operating expense is the physical school.
But someone only says that we're talking about the working to continue, that's exactly what we're talking about, is just continuing that evaluation. I mean, for you to have another year like in your district, as far as looking at everything and reviewing every expense that we have, and we don't wanna wait till the end of the year, so that is about what we're saying. All right, so we also have some proposals for compensation. Can you show me?
Sorry, I don't have to, Dr. Gray, there's no question before, but this continuing the way it is, I think I've asked you before, you gave me a number. How many years do you think we can keep this up with the trend going the way it is?
I keep using the number four. Four. We're gonna have to see some help from the state. And just as Mr. White has been a really good point, Miss Martin has supported. We're gonna have to keep exercising our rights to consolidate. We're gonna have to keep, we used the word scrubbing there, but I wanna make sure people understand. We are looking at everybody's budget, we're shifting money as much as we can before we're not using it. We can use historical data, because we can tell who's not using their money up here, so we shift it, we use it, we ask you guys for approval, we need to move money around. But we're looking at about a four-year stint. And I say that based on who's being controlled by the legislative body right now. We know it's not gonna change for these first two years. And it's unlikely that it'll change two years after. Every, most boards in the state have already put out a legislative agenda asking the state to provide additional funding. Until the voucher actually comes through, what if, if ESA actually come to pass? They have to come to pass. When they come to pass, then I believe we will get some additional funding, but it will not be on the same scale as the Education Safety Council. I would conserve your, say, four years, we've got last what we have right now. And we're going to have to continue to make changes. I'm talking to every other super in Barry County. I've got, we've got districts, I think I shared with you this one season. You've got two schools for one instruction group. They had to go down to the bare home. I'm not asking, do we do that yet? Because we have very different clientele that needs that support. If you've got schools that are gonna have one council or two schools, districts that are moving to that model, that would not benefit us. And that is still not, I mean, we're not cutting from Centual. She showed you the number for cutting from Centual. We've also taken on responsibilities in other areas that we now have to see through, right? What is it, Miss, I mean, it's a system of grades, SGS, innovation models. We took a lot of money to help our schools out, and that's great, and it helped us. Or I think it'd be the same setup without the furniture and other things we need. But we're gonna have to really start looking at those obligations and how we're starting to heat that up too. Everything's on the table right now. We're gonna be in this side for four years from the beginning.
So perhaps if, not only, if another district gets to that point where they don't have the two-month
Result.
Or reserve, reserve, whatever.
Just raise.
Yeah, the raise, the first thing, the first thing to come down. It'll affect our credit score, it'll affect a lot of, that's the first thing.
Pressing the credit score specifically.
I think I mentioned that to you guys before. If we decided to move into a bond in two years, just like Manny's just on your house, just in PayOne. So, no, and before we would just keep dropping, we would have to make adjustments. Keep consolidating, we might have to, if in last I, you're gonna start seeing that across the city. And across the state, that secondary programs that are moving to forty-day certification. In some schools, I'm not saying, we're not there, we're not gonna do it yet. But we're gonna have to make some really tough choices. Unless we get some help from the legislative body, which we cannot anticipate that for a very short.
I was loving it, it was very great news.
Let's break the conversation we're supposed to see. See if I can see that.
Yeah, thanks, I'll be loving it. So as far as the compensation proposals, they have to live on the compensation plan. So what you'll see up in the right corner, we're gonna make some recommendations about staffing adjustments. And I wanna remind the board that we come with staffing recommendations based on the need. That's how we don't make them part of the regular salary. So we do have the flexibility of adjusting and or removing as needed based on what we need in the future years. So you're gonna see a few recommendations for staffing adjustments. The teacher step increase is part of the compensation plan again, unless we're told otherwise, that's part of the compensation proposal. And we're gonna see something for one-time pay out of Esther. That we don't wanna commit to permanent raises, because we aren't really in limbo over the next three to four years of legislation. So just keeping those in mind. A, so I wanna start with this program. We started this about four years ago with grant funds. The initiative was started to extend the AICAS, CISA and the FANAS. So that there could be things like personal development after school. It included having after-school care for our students. That was more of an arrangement than it was watching the kids, it was academic-based. So we've been able to maintain this through different grant sources over two years over the grant cycle. We're asking that we continue to support this initiative, but the recommendation in the staffing committee is that we reduce the amount so that we can keep the initiative. Also, I wanna remind the board now that we have teacher incentive allotment. When we started with A, the idea was that we were working on the teacher incentive allotment. Some more teachers would qualify, they would be more driven by scores and Oh, now Mr. Chalice, I'm sorry, I went to you.
Tia, or incentive for?
Teacher incentive allotment, it was driven by scores and student achievement, sorry.
Scores and teaching.
So we are proposing that, that we continue the initiative, but we are proposing that it get hack salary fifty percent and the teachers would get slightly less reduction. We are also, we just talked about, Dr. Basuto talked about the need we have for licensed school licensed specialist in school psychology for the evaluations, the LSSPs. We are a priority of hiring. So we're either gonna spend it on salaries or we're gonna spend it on comprehensive services, same thing with our speech language pathologists. So we are recommending that we have sign-on intention using special education funds from federal programs to hire on, or I'm sorry, to add a sign-on bonus of ten thousand for these positions, if we invite. We are also recommending, now that's an estimate that costs about two hundred thousand dollars, again, using federal funds. We are also recommending to reduce the instructional coaching stipends, rather than reducing positions. We are reducing the stipend from seven thousand to four thousand five hundred dollars. That's an estimate that saves about fifty-five thousand dollars. And we are reducing in northern media and corporate content, wearing the core stipends for savings of about forty-seven thousand dollars. The compensation plan will also have the initiative of job titles such as security guards and educational dialogue stations that we're not gonna afford already. But we want to give it a higher for next year now. I wanna connect that the educational dialogue stations also evaluate our students, similar to LSSP. So we're really trying to have all bases, contract to assist LSSPs or educational dyads to make sure we have our students evaluated in the twenty-one. So any questions about the general fund budget expenditures compensation? There are no raises included in the local budget at all, except for the teacher step. I'm gonna move right into Esther. Esther, we anticipate that between July one and September thirty, we can use about three point six million dollars. Of that, one point two million dollars is for proposal for one-time pay for staff. And the other two point four million dollars is to support pay for several staff that's already getting funded for forty days between July and September. Now, I, we have some options here for one-time pay. We have talked about one percent for employees. There are five different options that the board will receive. This is a one percent for all employees plus the teacher step increase. What that means is that one ninety-nine, that local, that one hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three is already built into the local budget. The other seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars that you see there would be paid from Esther's funds before September the third. As a sign-on and/or intention for qualified staff at that point. That's option A. Option B says seven hundred dollars across the board plus the teacher step increase. That would put us at about a million dollars out of Esther, not one hundred and sixty-four thousand. That, one hundred and sixty-four thousand is gonna be required, it's a single model, see global, that would be added in the budget. You'll notice there on the right, what the general pay increase would be for the different groups. Option C has teachers at two percent with a second increase. One and a half percent for all other qualified employees except the administrator, the AM scale. Which is people where SMT six. I wanna tell you why you ended up on option D and A. In the A of scale, you also have a lot of very hardworking people that are not in SMT. You have people in HR, you have people in finance. If we scooped that whole group, or not scooped, let me rephrase. If we put that whole group at a one point two five, they would miss out on the raise. So we created options, a couple of other options to give the board so that those employees can be moved to the one and a half percent, except for SMT. And then the last one just says two percent for teachers with step increase and one and a half for all other qualified employees. So that's what the proposals are. We have five different proposals, but I really wanted to stress for why we landed on five is that it's very important.
Questions on that, Board? And to be clear, Board, this is a one-time, this is not permanent. So it will not be permanent every year. We have to come back to the table again next year. Unless something happens in the fall, or would you feel like, because the legislative session isn't until the spring, unless there's a special session called. If something was called and you need to get different numbers, we would come back to you. But this is acting on what we know today, all these recommendations. Yes, they are one-time. Questions on any one of these?
So shall we, shall we A and E?
A?
A.
This is everybody, one percent, and the teachers get their step.
And we'll make this the board on, I think, Mr. Chappell, so he will have more time to review it then.
And Board, also, let me say this, we, I can confidently say, we've had plenty of conversations with Miss Salinas, not this person, Susan, about where she says among all the other school districts, some of their recommendations. Obviously, I think that they were not important. They also realized the situation, everybody's in and out. But the teacher step is really important, that the teachers still keep their step, because that's longevity for building toward retirement. So we really wanted to make sure, put that in there.
And they even said, or sorry, even said, retention.
Yeah, the retention, correct.
Yeah, we just, you kind of forced a little bit.
I don't think they, unless I read it correctly, there was a flat two percent, the eighty who dragged there, there was no stepping there. Correct?
Yes, sir.
And Board members, you're gonna get all these in the Board, all this in the Board update. By all means, if you have questions, we'll have the Board performance signing update, and/or you can reach out to our menu. We can sit and talk if you have any other additional questions on the recommendation. Yes, sir?
So what's going on with the board?
Depends on you guys, what recommendations you bring forward. We'll go with one in the end, depending on where you guys are.
So we threw the recommendation today, since we're here at the board workshop.
So we are. These are the final recommendations we brought to you. Obviously, we would like for you guys to think about it before you form any adjustments. Today is about giving you more information, so that you can make a decision, the decision that you're making as a trustee.
And how is it gonna work at the board meeting? What do we preset, what the recommendation's gonna be?
We'll bring the final recommendation in the end based on where you guys are with everything. Nothing will be final until the seventh of August, here at the meeting. We'll bring you something to work.
And something else, I agree with what you're saying, part was, here, this year, we're not spending. Two, can we make sure we're paying the licenses that we earned? So we wanna make sure, absolutely positive, when we ask for the approval, we can cover those bottom numbers. So seven sixty-one versus a million, there's one point one. Where can we land safely to make sure that we can cover that? And hold the board, since we chop, how should we land, how should we go? And I was just asking for, according to the second people wanting to land, to gather any mission.
You want to say, I can send out a video just to get a sense of where the board is on the RBS? And then that would be the recommendation we actually bring to the board.
I would love to do that, but I thought it's just like, it's like a vote, right?
Correct. So Mr. White, in prior years, what we've done is I, you know, part of my job is to sit with each one of you, if I can get to the bridge. And see where you are, where you think you are as a group. And so at that end, we'll bring the final recommendation up, and then you guys will take the final recommendations, it comes from administration. And so if I recommend, based on what I'm hearing, you guys share with me today, and then at the board performance, I may, I may bring up option D. You put option D. I may bring up option D. As a collective seven, you may say, yes, that's fine, or you may not take the recommendations. And at that point, if that was to happen, then we bring it back to the board. That's how that would work. Today, we wanted to give you as many options. I don't, in prior years, we've ever just given one or two. Because we want you to consider all the different possibilities, especially in the top of the year that we have right now. Any question? Any other questions? Clarifications on any one of these? Again, Board, I wanted, I did wanna share this also. I recall from conversations, it's obviously, this is not the first year I've worked with any of all seven people. Usually, what you guys have always asked for is remember the teachers. That's the first thing. And let's define teachers. The state of Texas, a teacher can be a librarian, be a counselor. Teacher, librarian, counselor. You always, that's what I've heard you say over the years. The other two is also safety and security, that's always been very important. So those are all the different factors that we take into consideration, but obviously, because this is a working as a team. There are also other groups, and that's why I'm glad this, my opinion is clarified that with folks like HR and finance and folks of that nature. Our job is to represent everybody as best as we can. And yes, we understand the greatest impact it's in the classroom. And so again, we'll bring you a final recommendation based on prior years of information, and then what you guys share with me, and we continue to talk about this.
So the teacher incentive allotment, this is the first time, it seems, the budget formally adopted. It is a state fund, and it's not required to be adopted by the board. But it does have some different requirements that it has spending and sending the allotments out by, I just want to make sure that it has its own separate fund. And we can account for it and report to the board. And we can account for it and we report it to, to the board as we prepare, et cetera. So this is something you will see on, uh, for the first time just here. So the other thing that's a companion to this, on February the twentieth, the board approved the teacher incentive allotment spending plan. What you will see is also part of the, the compensation plan. We need to make sure that we link the plan so that we have approval to pay every year. And the reason we're not enough specifics in there, just to be really, really clear. Those things change every year in state. The majority of our is up to dance possible and not being held up into, uh, being a teacher. So what you'll see in the compensation plan is a link to our website so that that's updated constantly. So that's just a reminder, I'm gonna leave these two here for us. And last but not least, child nutrition. You do have, this is, um, agenda item four M. We do have an amendment that is requested, uh, by child nutrition, almost one point six million dollars. There is an impact to financial balance of two point one million dollars that is by design. I will remind you that, um, for child nutrition, in U.S., uh, the Texas Department of Agriculture requires us to have a maximum of two and a half months of operating expenses. So they're, they are even together spending that out online more that those pieces that we use specifically for cafeteria, whether they be equal in our furniture and door equipment for the cafeteria. So that will put us down to about one point nine million dollars. We should be at about one point eight. So that's a good number. If we can spend down at two point one million dollars, uh, I'm sorry, one point six, that'll finish a really good number at the end of the year before the auditors, uh, get, you know, at least, well, have spending time of it. And then next year's proposed child nutrition budget, this is, uh, uh, budget neutral. We estimate about eight point nine million dollars in revenue and expenses. We will more than likely, child nutrition's been operating well. We will more than likely have to spend, we will do it in the year, additional, um, expenses other than, I'm sorry, in equipment so that we don't have to spend on our financial balance again later. But this is a budget neutral program. Any questions about child nutrition? And the last thing is our interest in sinking fund. This is for debt service. This is for our outstanding debt. The numbers look a little bit wonky right now. This is because we're dependent on that final piece of the task. Verification from the state. So this may change a little bit, but if anything, the local portion will go down. But our payment is four point, about four point seven million dollars with the majority of those funds coming from local taxpayers. So in a nutshell, what does this look like? Our twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budgets that include the general fund, ESR, and teacher incentive allotment. We prioritized and added from this same cost as we went through last year. About five point three million dollars are going directly to support priority one of student success. Additional two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars going to support, uh, the students' families and community. We've reduced about eight hundred and ten thousand dollars of operational expenses. And we've added about seven hundred thousand for employee and organizational improvement and the financial stewardship state about the state. We've already, these are just here for information. We've already discussed everything that we brought up. Those items have been discussed. But we do have, just, uh, really quickly, donations of twenty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-four. Uh, five hundred and ninety-four dollars worth of last plan loss and twenty-four thousand dollars for scholarships from Los Corbales for our students. We also have a request to extend for one more year if we can in pest management. This is the first of five one-year option extension we are allowed here, uh, when the board approved. But we are requesting that we extend for an additional year. The rest of the items, monthly tax corrections, financial statements, um, it's still too early. Those will be in the board update. At the very least, we'll have them on Tuesday for, um, the board performance planning meeting. And you will also have the auxiliary and professional, uh, monthly recurring reports that we have. We've already talked about the compensation plan. And these are the upcoming events and the times. So are there any questions? The other thing I just wanted to remind everybody, just, we have the eighty-nine Texas legislative session that's starting soon. And we have a map of the eighty-eight. So, Mr. Sanz, what's your question? It's about two to four more years of, of, um,
Hi, Eric.
Yes.
That's, what a description. Is any idea going to use her?
So for one last thing before she closes up, we go back to the dates.
Yes, sir.
So board, by the end of the week, uh, we, we will send you a board update on Friday. Uh, we will send you the final recommendation that administration's gonna make with regards to, um, the budget for, for, uh, next, uh, next Thursday with your consideration, um, during the record board meeting. We can have further discussion about it at the board performance plan. But if you have any advice on it, you can see the individual I presented prior years, just to be real clear about that. Uh, but again, you'll get the final recommendation from administration based on where our finances are currently. And we'll ask that you consider for April, for Thursday, Jan., uh, June the thirteenth. And of course, we'll elaborate a little more on, uh, at the board performance planning for your, and of course, you can ask any questions that'll open to that board. Um, and then we'll ask that you, um, vote on the thirteenth. So I wanna make, make sure that was true. Anything else, Eric?
No, just because we're, we're here, anyone who says me, graduation day thirty tomorrow and eight-thirty on Thursday. The, just the change of time. And the public hearing for the thirteenth, just because it's out of our usual time. The public hearing starts at four o'clock and we'll start our regular board meeting at four fifteen, four, which is. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I will turn it back to Dr. Nuss. That concludes our presentation.
There you go.
There you go.
Alright. Thank you. Uh, so we'll move now to adjournment. Uh, the time is now. Oh, your question? Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
My topic about, I know, X. Okay.
As far as X is the renewal of the legal counsel, uh, contract, uh, the police will come to you all in closed session, um, because I know that there's, um, some questions on that.